All right, councilors, we're going to start the Subcommittee on the Downtown Beautification Program. At this time, I'm going to take the floor. We have a new order, so please pay attention. Councilor De Malavido. Absent. Councilor Roya Vazaneda, present. Councilor Giovanni Recupro. Councilor Judith Garcia. Councilor Melinda Vega Maldonado. I see her as logged on, present. Councilor Leo Robinson. Councilor Yemed Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilor Todd Taylor.
Here.
Councilor Anya Lopez. Councilor Calvin Brown. I see him there. Councilor Naomi Zabit.
Present.
And 10 present. And one absent. Okay. The call of the meeting is the following: Subject matter. Discuss Downtown Beautification Initiative and Potential Long-Term Funding. So at this time, I will turn to the officials invited to attend. The Subcommittee meeting is City Manager Tom Ambrosino, who is present; Honorable Members of the City Council; DBW Commissioner Fidel Maltese, who is present; Resident Debra Zabit, and all members of the public. At this time, I will turn the floor over to co-sponsor, Councilor Garcia.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone, and welcome this evening to this exciting meeting that I'm sure will be very fruitful. So today's Subcommittee is essentially to just showcase the incredible work of our residents, some who are present here today in person, and I'm referring to Celeste and Debra, as well as some members who are also present virtually. I know that Dave is joining us virtually, along with some of our key supporters and allies, Fidel and Dan Cortez, who have helped a lot with this program. Just to give a little bit of context to my colleagues, early last year, Debra had reached out to me. She is a resident of the downtown area in Chelsea, and there's been a lot of conversations with this council and Tom Ambrosino's administration about really revitalizing downtown and investing a lot in improving our sidewalks, improving the infrastructure in downtown, and we've made great strides to do that. We have made monetary strides to do that. We've decided to really improve our roadway there and make it more pedestrian safe for our residents. However, Debra, along with other Chelsea residents who are here and our amazing volunteers, realized that it needs to improve aesthetically, and they all gathered and tried to figure out ways of making it look more beautiful and more welcoming for our residents, and they talked a lot about this flower project that they wanted to start. So many of you guys who walk our streets here in Chelsea have probably noticed the beautiful flower pods that are everywhere in downtown, and that was done entirely through the creative ideas, volunteer work, and approach of the residents who are here today, joining us in person and virtually. So that project has really grown, and it's grown a lot with the support of Fidel, our Commissioner of Public Works, and it's also grown with the support of Dan Cortez, who is also joining us here today, and Mimi. Mimi was a key ally as well there. So I am going to hand off the floor to Fidel to tell us a little bit more about the progress, showcase, and highlight what they've been doing, and essentially what the long-term vision is for the program and how the city could play a role in supporting it in a more sustainable manner monetarily. So, Fidel, I'll give you the floor, and for any of my colleagues who have questions after, feel free to do so through the chair.
Good evening, councilors, and thank you very much for your time. I know that hopefully it can be heard okay. You know, there's a lot of matters on the table, and I can see that maybe this year might not be the most ideal financially to launch a new initiative. However, the goal of this presentation that we're putting together is to try to convince you otherwise. So as Commissioner of Public Works, litter and beautification is dear and close to my heart. Not a day goes by in my position when I don't receive a text message, a call, or an email from one of the councilors about trash or litter in a particular area of Chelsea. I know that Councilor Lopez has reached out to me many times about trash, you know, in his areas, as has Councilor Recupro, Councilor Zabit, and pretty much all the other councilors. So what we wanted to throw out tonight is what I consider a new initiative. It's an innovative initiative, and it's something that I'm really proud of and has been 100% resident-led. So I wanted to introduce the idea up front, right? So the idea, and it's on Slide 3 of the proposal. So what we are proposing is an expansion of the flower project, and as you can see on the map and read on the text, what we are proposing is that we receive the funding from this council to hire 25 part-time Chelsea residents. So obviously, Chelsea residence is going to be a requirement for this program, and these residents work part-time for the city, so they will not be offered benefits. They are hired as a part-time basis and can be released at any time, and these residents really focus on four things. One of them is beautification programs, right? So in the last few years, we have done a lot of plantings, a lot of flowers, a lot of banners, you know, but having boots on the ground to really do this citywide is important. What we're going to share on the other slides is flower plantings. So we have done a really good job in the downtown this past summer and really focused on bringing color and beauty to the downtown. Then litter control is a big focus as well, which is basically picking up trash, right? So we all know that as you walk around, as you drive in Chelsea, we have a nexus of trash. So this would be actually, on a daily basis, doing pickup of the trash. And finally, and most importantly, I believe that with these residents, we are going to be able to leverage them and use them for whether it's education of businesses, education of residents, it's establishing a relationship of one-on-one with businesses in their respective areas where the residents will focus on. So as you can see in the map, basically, we would really attempt to distribute these 25 residents as best as possible, but the goal is to target as much of Chelsea as possible, particularly our parks. Particularly our parks. Okay? Thank you. So, you know, in 2020, we did a pilot of this initiative. So we called it "The Flower Project," and it started with Debra, Celeste, and a few other residents who really wanted to bring beauty to the downtown, particularly in the time of COVID. So we sat down, we strategized, and really, we targeted three things. One was to hire part-time employees and to give money back to these residents so that it's a win-win. They do work for the city that is very needed, and they also provide some very important income. In the process, we saw these residents develop a very close relationship with businesses, where they came through and they started engaging the businesses. They engaged the businesses in watering the flowers, for example, in requesting the businesses to pick up the litter. And finally, we created residents who were invested in the success of the project, right? So one thing is to be a resident and volunteer. These residents were extremely committed to the program. So as you can see in the pictures, it was very small. We had basically Celeste, Dan, Lisa Sanigate, and a few other volunteers. On the bottom picture, you can see one of the planters, as it was finished, in Dan Cortez's pickup truck. So it was very homemade, right? I mean, it was low budget, and the idea was to bring color and beauty to the downtown. So how did it work? So we first started with litter control, right? That was first. But then, we had a goal of bringing flowers to the downtown. So we built planters, and you saw them all throughout the downtown. The actual planters were made in-house, so they were very inexpensive, and DPW, out of our budget, we purchased all of the flower. The actual labor, so the actual work, was completed by volunteers, and we also were able to give a stipend to a few of the residents who were involved. And here's more pictures, you know, of the efforts in the downtown. You know, what was really cool and really interesting was the engagement of the residents as they walked by, right? I mean, they cheered us on, they engaged, you know, in the plants, in the beauty, and more than once, residents stopped by, you know, to help us in the process. I think that the efforts that were performed this summer and were accomplished is something that we can scale up and we can bring at a citywide level. So what we ended up doing is we installed 47 planters, right? And the focus was basically the downtown area. So from City Hall to Third and Broadway. We created relationships with the businesses and established, you know, a relationship of them watering the flowers, for example, of them more proactively being engaged in efforts in their storefront. So this is the cost, right? So one thing that I do want to point out is that the majority of the cost is going to go back to Chelsea residents, right? So what we are requesting is funding to hire 25 part-time residents. The salary would be $15 an hour, and again, these residents would, it would be an open application process. We would interview them, and we would bring them on board as employees of the city of Chelsea, part-time. So I believe that this program will have a win-win effect. Again, we are bringing Chelsea employees into the mix, we are reimbursing them for their work, and we are therefore creating champions who are invested in making the city look as clean as possible.
So is, I think it was also co-sponsored by Naomi. I don't know if Naomi, if you wanted to say a few words about it at this time first before I open it up to the invited guests?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I would just like to speak in favor of this project because of what it adds to the downtown particularly. It does, as Fidel already stated, it brings a lot of beauty and light and color engagement in the community, in the downtown area, which is a good thing, and it is something that provides jobs for Chelsea residents, which is another good thing. And third, beyond the downtown area beautification, it's going to address a problem that is really citywide, as Fidel stated. There are real problem areas. There is more garbage on the streets and the cutters on the sidewalk, throughout the streets, than in other areas. And DPW does an excellent job of cleaning as much as it can and emptying the trash barrels. We still consistently have garbage thrown out the streets, and it's not really feasible for us, DPW, cleaning the streets, not just the garbage, but the streets every day. So this is very much a win-win situation. We are providing Chelsea residents with employment, and at the same time, we're addressing something that really is a quality of life issue for all the residents of Chelsea, all throughout Chelsea. It's a matter of hygiene and aesthetically what we're surrounded by in our everyday life that we deserve, the quality of life of being able to walk out of our door and around the neighborhood and be part of our neighborhood because it is clean and healthy. So there are really great aspects of this proposal, and it's not, and it's seasonal, employing these employees seasonally, and as Fidel stated, they're not offered because they're part-time, and it's really a high program to see if this will benefit the community as a whole. So I am in support of this 100%, and I'm really excited to take off from here and just figure it out, and I hope that everybody will support me. Thank you.
Well, before, I wanted to just state, I think, before we do anything, you know, I think it would be fair just to recognize Debra, who is here tonight, provide her a little bit, I mean, I know she's initiating this, state what she has to say about the program, and then we'll go about and start asking questions from the city councilors.
So thank you, thank you, everybody, for considering this program. It was a success story all around. First, a resident having an idea and coming to Mimi and a city counselor, and then talking to Fidel, and having this, Fidel basically just say, "Yes, let's do this, and we'll figure it out." Being able to utilize resources with the pallets from the food distribution, which became the planters, which I believe grew out of a Mimi idea, which was amazing. And then sort of just putting out a little bit on Facebook, looking for volunteers and finding Celeste and Dave, and being able to do this every week. We did it July 7th through like the beginning of October, and the work that we did, really, it felt so community-based. Celeste was out many days a week, making sure the planters looked good, cleaning up, talking to the store owners, and so it really just brought, it gave a sense of community when we didn't have community. It felt, everybody felt very like, we were very separated by the pandemic, so it was a really nice way to get people together in a very safe environment. And I also think that the planters and the picking up the litter, doing the planters, like learning about plants, learning how to build the planters, reaching out to residents, budgeting, project management, these are all like things that are an outgrowth of the actual program, and I think the biggest thing probably is the community outreach. It's just having this very casual, and I would love, if Dan can, talk about it, just this very casual way to reach residents and casual way to reach store owners without it needing to be an issue. Like, it's sort of like, hey, we have this gift to give to you, and establish a relationship that way. We experienced, and if Celeste has a few minutes to talk as well, just this outpouring from the residents walking by of like, "Thank you so much," basically, for doing this. So, yeah, I do hope that it's supported, and if there are any questions, I guess we'll answer those. Is it okay? Celeste, do you want to talk?
Hello? Thank you. Hi, councilors, thanks for having me tonight. It was a very engaging project. I've talked to people that I never would have had a conversation with because of the barrier of the language, you know, Spanish and English. You wouldn't think that that barrier would be broken by just a simple project of coming together and looking forward to this seasonal activity. Being that we've gone through COVID, it was a nice takeaway moment for us to just not think about COVID for that little time. During the summer, we did have a drought in 2020 that demanded a lot of water to the plants, but the businesses were great. They supplied water to us. They even offered us food, so, and we had them cleaning in front of their stores, so the streets looked much cleaner, especially in my area, Chestnut Street, where there's always a lot of trash, you know? So in saying that, I'm looking forward to you guys being just excited as I am, because even though there was a monetary value to it by Fidel later on, there were two individuals that came on with me, and still today, they're not getting anything for what they do, but they're out there, and in front of Dunkin' Donuts, it's clean. In front of the Tadashi store, it's clean. In front of the dentist, it's clean. We got a new sidewalk, you know? These are just individuals with the mind of, "I see that, I'm going to put it in the trash." There's not a lot of people like that, but I hope that minds change, and we can have a cleaner environment for our kids. In saying that, I would like to thank you very much for even considering it. Thank you.
So at this time, I will take questions through the chair, and then we'll direct them to either the Commissioner or the City Manager himself, unless the City Manager has anything, I see him here, if he has anything that he wants to say about the program before we take questions.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I would just say, I'm in full support of a citywide beautification program of this magnitude. So keep in mind, what's being proposed is not a downtown initiative. The pilot this summer was tried out in the downtown, but the idea is to keep the city clean. The way you can do it is by hiring a cadre of temporary employees for the period of time, typically from April to October. That is really the only way we can keep up with the amount of trash and litter that occurs in our neighborhoods during the course of those months. It's the only way we can keep up with the trash that occurs in our parks. So Fidel's right, the most complaints I get in that office on a regular basis are about trash in the parks, trash in the streets, and those come not just from councilors, although councilors email me a lot about that issue, but they come from regular residents. And I don't like to go back to Revere, but the way it was handled in Revere, and it wasn't my idea, this was something that has been in place in Revere since the 1970s, is you hired every year a cadre of temporary workers in the DPW budget from April to October. In Revere, it was always retired senior citizens made up that workforce, and they consistently worked from April to October. And we had, it was mostly men, but there were some women, but we had people who worked on that program for 20 years, from their mid-60s to their mid-80s, and they would be assigned, typically to a park area and to the streets around that park area, and that was their job every day from April to October. Now, does it solve every trash problem? Of course not, but it makes a real difference, because it means every day, in that period of time when litter is at its worst, you have boots on the ground. And you saw from this pilot what boots on the ground a few people could do in the downtown. The idea is, we would hire this cadre of 25 people, here probably not senior citizens, because frankly, we just, we don't have that, I haven't seen, even our senior work-off program has such little involvement, but we would hire Chelsea residents, whether they're seniors or young people, whoever we wish, Chelsea residents committed to their neighborhood, who would work for this temporary period. Typically, you always pay people more than the minimum wage, and the proposal is $15 an hour here to start, and they would be, they would be an adjunct to the DPW. They would be people that we would have out there every single day for a six-month period, and I really think it would make a difference, and not eliminate, but substantially reduce the complaints we get in the city about trash. So yes, I'm in full support of a proposal like this. We had preliminary discussions about this, you know, just before COVID was starting. Obviously, once COVID started, we had to, you know, pull away from that. We certainly couldn't fund this in the FY21 budget, but it is something that both Fidel and I are interested in moving forward with. It may be something that I think about funding initially through free cash, if and when we get free cash certified. So yes, I'm a full and enthusiastic proponent of this citywide initiative.
So Councilor Anya Lopez had his hand up first, so if you'd have any questions through the chair, and then Councilor Recupro.
To the chair, to Fidel. So these 25 people that you are thinking to hire, they're going to be city employers, and they will be working for DPW, and they are going to be only temporary?
Yes, so this is actually very similar to what we do in the summer, right? So in the summertime, we hire youth, right? So they work two months, right? I mean, and they're hired as temporary employees. For the DPW, it's a job posting that goes up, you know, and everyone is able to apply. We then interview those candidates, and we hire the best possible candidates. Being a Chelsea resident is a requirement of that program, so they would be temporary employees of the DPW.
And it's not going to be just Broadway?
It's not just going to be Broadway.
Citywide?
You want to just clarify that up? Yeah, no, no, the idea is to do a citywide program. So what, you know, it's going to be, you know, a work in progress, but on Slide 3, on the handout, you know, we took a stab at how the assignments would be done, right? I mean, obviously, we would adjust, you know, as we get going and see, you know, make modifications, but at the start, the assignment would be as they are shown on Slide 3.
Okay. These 25 workers will be like in Boston, downtown Boston? I don't know if you have seen people working cleaning up everything? That's going to be something like that?
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely. So again, the main focus would be litter control, so picking up trash, right? But as, you know, once they're done with picking up trash, they can then do either planting, you know, some flowers, you know, making sure that, you know, the parks are clean, for example, that any issues are reported. So they're basically just boots on the ground for DPW every day.
Yeah, I'm just going to make a comment. I thought it was just going to be Broadway. I was going to say- I was gonna say, if it is just Broadway, we have this project, Broadway Carter, why don't we take the money from there if it is gonna be just Broadway? Thank you.
The citywide.
Councilor Brown and then Councilor Recupero.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you. Can you go to me?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. So first, I want to thank everyone for the presentation. I know that the city council has already invested a lot of money into the beautification of not only downtown Chelsea, but also the surrounding areas. We've done the lighting. We've done not only the lighting for street lighting, where people were complaining, but we also put decorative lighting, especially downtown. We've done, we're working on the traffic projects there. The public art and the public displays throughout the community, we've invested a lot of money. I, I have a problem with 25 new hires. Just a bit for the city right now to undertake. We are still in a pandemic. We have, and we still continue to try to make un-resourced available for folks who's struggling, for rent, for food, for basic necessities. And I just think that, you know, we are, right now, we, to commit to 15 or 25 or even five new hires is a bit more. We don't know where we're gonna come out of this pandemic. We don't know when. We don't know what our budget is gonna be like once we come out. We do have a summer youth program, and I heard the City Manager talking about, I mean, a lot of this would be around the summer youth program. I think that's something that we can incorporate the youth that we already look to hire every year to work closely with DPW. I know also in the past, when we've talked about flower base and flower potting, that it always came an issue about maintaining, about maintaining. How we're gonna get the water there, where we're gonna get the water from? I know we've heard some comments regarding stores and businesses. But being in the light of this pandemic, every little, every little amount of money spent from a store going forward is a hurting thing unless they have money coming back. I'd like to hear more about the project. I'd like to hear more about incorporating our youth into the project. As like I stated, we already have a summer program where we look to hire numbers of youth. And a lot of us, city councilors, have said publicly that sometimes the youth just don't have enough to do. So, I think to undertake and even consider to undertake right now, hiring 15 or 20 or 25 and 40, whether they're part-time or not, that's a lot, that's a lot. I'd love to see the, I'd love to see those that's right now actively involved with this organization of the downtown beautification to somewhat be part partnership with supervision of our youth and also our DPW, where we can work together as a collaboration. And for just to go out and put up, you know, 25 positions, part-time for the city to undertake on here, I just think it's too much. We, we have, you know, committed ourselves. I know we're biting our teeth, where we're going with the budget right now and, and the next few months. And I think we really oughta, we oughta consider and, and look deeply into the next few months in the city of Chelsea and what we're gonna be able to do. Thank you. I'm gonna run the city hall, so if you don't see me, I'll be on my way to city hall and I'll speak to anyone I want to speak to. Thank you.
Councilor Recupero, then Councilor Taylor. What's the question? Go ahead.
One of the questions I have is, these positions, I, you know, it's a good thing the city needs to be clean, because it's always dirty. There's more, and it's always... The, the main question I have is this. Are these people gonna be part-time, all the time? Or you're gonna rotate and change people each year? Are the same people gonna do the same job? Or is this gonna be a program where everybody in the city at one time or another can contribute and go in? Instead of having one permanent person do it all the time, you wanna give, you say Chelsea residents something? This is a better thing. When a Chelsea resident can turn around, but not the same person all the time, because then it becomes a full-time, part-time position. The other way, everybody has an opportunity to get to it, not just the same individuals that are there all the time. That's one thing I would like to see. Not put the same people year after year after year. I would like to see different people. Since you wanna help the community and the Chelsea people, rotate them. You never know which person might need it during a particular time, and there would be their way out for them to help themselves. Instead of just each year say, okay, then it doesn't become. It becomes a permanent position for the, for the same people all the time. And that's not a good thing. You wanna help the community and change it, you rotate it. Each year, you have different people. The next thing I have is, Roca does the same thing as you're proposing. More or less, you're saying these people are gonna get flowers, and then they're gonna clean the streets. So are they gonna work together with Roca to clean? Or is it gonna be, they do it and Roca does it different? Because from what I understand, Roca comes to you too. And you have those people, how many of them people do you have from a particular time to another for them to work under you? I know there's at least 20, 25 over there, right? I don't know, I don't know how many you have. But I'm saying, so are these people gonna work in conjunction with them? Are they gonna be in different sections, or they're gonna work together? So now, instead of having 25, if they're gonna do the same thing as Roca does, right? You're gonna have twice as many people to do that. That's a better thing. If they're gonna work together, it's a better thing. It maintains our city even better than it is now. And another question I have is a simple one. You said, Tom, Mr. Ambrosino said, right? Well, the cost of this is what, $300,000 a year? That's what it's gonna cost us, right? So, okay, so it's gonna cost us $300,000. When these people work, right? And here's a question, it's, money is important to us. Because right now, things are tough. I'm not against giving you money. I just wanna know all the facts and how they, everything operates before I commit myself to doing something. So, now, these people, on the time after they go out, right? Can they collect unemployment? I know on the 19 hours, when they're not entitled to city, all the things like the city get. They don't get health insurance, they don't get none of that stuff, right? That's not included in their package, right? Because on the 20 hours, the city's not required to do so. So they wouldn't be part of it, one. And do, let's say you said, the three, four, the six months that they don't work, are they gonna be able to go to unemployment and collect from this? Because they are working. So, it becomes even another issue now. The time that they're not there, who picks up the city picks up half of their unemployment? That's how it works. Everybody, you know, the city puts half in. So in other words, the city's actually on to this thing for more than the time. Because after that time, they can go out and collect unemployment, right? They'd be entitled to it, Mr., can you ask Mr. Ambrosino if that's the case?
So typically, we would work to ensure that they didn't trigger unemployment. And, you know, I can't, typically, the rule is just around six months. And so you do have to be wary of ensuring that they're not employed so that they trigger unemployment. My experience in Revere was that, in all my years there, I think that happened to us two times, that a senior went and sought unemployment. But I'm not saying it can't happen. You have to just be careful and ensure that as you're keeping an eye on how many weeks they're working, you're not triggering that unemployment flaw. And so it's something you'd have to keep your eye on. So, yes, it's possible, but if the city handles it correctly, it should be able to avoid that obligation.
Okay, so in other words, from, let me guess what you're saying, say, if the city does it the way it's supposed to, these people won't be able to get unemployment. If the city messes up, they can go out and get unemployment?
Can, yes.
Is that what you said?
I would say, yes, that's an accurate statement.
Okay.
So, okay, that's, that's fair, that's a good, all right. So, now, when we do all this, from what I get from Mr. Fidel, what he said, it's not gonna be just a downtown project, it's gonna be all over the city, right?
Yes, absolutely. I want to be clear, this is not a downtown initiative. The pilot this summer was limited to the downtown. But the idea is to address the regular and persistent complaints about trash. We would have this group spread out over the entire city and equally distributed in all the areas so that we have individuals with boots on the ground in every neighborhood. That is the goal.
Okay, and, and in this pamphlet that you gave us here, right? There's something that I don't understand. Here, you said you wanna hire people that are already in the food program. That's, what I read here, it said that, these people, that's what it says in this pamphlet. If I'm reading it wrong, then I'm not, I don't know how to read. It says, that's what you wanna do, you wanna provide? That's what it says here.
I think we utilize those people for this summer's pod.
So, if, if, if I get what you said here, so more or less, what this is doing is you're putting the people that are already working for you, transferring them over. That's what this stuff says.
Um, so can I, I'm sorry, can I just jump in? Because I wrote it, and if there was a miscommunication, that's on me.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you too much.
Oh, sorry. So I wrote the, the, the presentation. So if there's a miscommunication, that, that's on me. This summer, we, because of Fidel, just looking where we could have, we needed additional hands, obviously. And it was a great way to give, you know, give residents more income. So people from the food distribution, when they were done with that, would come on a Tuesday to help plant on a weekly basis. So that was a, it was a win-win for everybody. The, the program, that was also part of the pilot. These were people that have embedded already, they were in the system. It was a nice way to just to continue to contribute to their income. The program that we're talking about for next year is open to anybody. It's not going to be any specific. And Dan Cortez is on, and he could talk a little bit maybe about Roca. I don't, I don't know if that's the appropriate time to talk about it. Because we did talk with them, they did come by one, once or twice to help us with the cleanup. So, I just want to clear up that, as you said in the beginning, this is open to all residents. I think it's a great idea that it's open to all residents every year, that there's no kind of like, because it gives people not only income, but you're learning a new skill, right? Community outreach, learning about horticulture, learning project management. All of these things are great, and yes, it should be open to whomever, year after year after year. So, if there was a miscommunication, that's just on me. Does that, does that make sense?
So in other words, this program is not specifically for those people that are in the food program?
No.
So, this was a misprint?
It was a miscommunication on my part.
Because if you, I, I read this and what I understood, that's what I meant.
Yeah, no, so I just wanted to clear it up.
According to what Mr. Fidel said, this is an open for Chelsea residents all over the place. And that's a good thing. There's nothing wrong with giving it to everybody.
Right.
It's the wrong thing just to target a specific group and say, okay, so now we're gonna create it.
Counselor, we're gonna move on, we just go to our time.
I just want to just clarify one thing, though. I mean, it's possible that in that open application process, some of these Chelsea residents who worked in the food distribution program would apply. Some of those workers were quite good. And so it's possible some could apply and we might hire them. But this is not geared to giving, it's not a full employment program for people.
Okay, let me ask you a question. How many?
Other councilors are waiting.
One more, this is the last question I ask. How many people work in the food distribution place that live in Chelsea?
I think all of them did at one time.
How many do you have?
15 now might have been hired.
15?
Yeah.
So if they all applied, there will be more than three-quarters of the people, almost all of them would be them.
I think some of them have moved out of Chelsea now, and so they wouldn't, we wouldn't accept anyone not living in Chelsea.
The only concern I have is that I want Chelsea residents to get it. Any Chelsea resident. I don't want no specific person to get that job. If they're gonna get it, everybody has an equal chance to get it. That's the only concern I had. By this, it, it's specifically said, and she clarified it, it said it's not that way.
You have our assurance.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Taylor. Councilor Taylor.
Hi, sorry. I'm, I'm having a hard time hearing, the audio is really bad, and I keep on getting like echoes and... So if I, if I'm asking a repeated question, please excuse me, the audio's horrible. So this sounds to me like a pretty good program. And I think I would be all for it in normal circumstances. But I, I mean, question to the City Manager, how, we're over $6 million now in the hole for this fiscal year, as of your last report. Correct me if I'm wrong. But how are we gonna add on another $300,000 in spending when that money is not coming from anywhere? We're already having a, a $6.5 million shortfall over, over six months? Mr. City Manager?
Yes, I've heard that.
So, you know, this is, this is part of the reason why we've held back on this. This was, the initial idea was to propose this as part of the FY21 DPW budget. And we didn't because of fiscal reasons. And so the question is, will we be able to add this to the budget in FY22? And it's, it's like every other policy, it's, you're weighing the benefits versus the cost. We are not gonna have a balanced budget in FY22. So there's gonna be some necessary subsidy of the FY22 budget, regardless of whether we include this or not. And so the issue is, do we, you know, I'm hoping that our subsidy doesn't have to be anywhere near where it was in fiscal year 21, which is, we subsidized that budget by $5 million or just under, 4.9 million. So it's just weighing whether this makes sense or not, given the economic times. One idea was, try it for one year with one-time money, with free cash. So I do anticipate at some point in the next month, month and a half, we are gonna get free cash certified for fiscal year 20, for the close of books on June 30th, 2020, for fiscal year 20. And depending on how, how much money that is, we might wanna say, let's try this program for a year and see if it works. And that would be an appropriation, a one-time appropriation from free cash, not including this in the FY21, FY22 budget. So it's not a recurring operating expense. It's a, let's try this for a year, given these are temporary employees, we're gonna let them go in October anyways, and try it that way. I haven't yet decided whether that's an approach I wanna pursue because I don't know yet how much free cash is going to be certified. If it's a small amount, that probably will be off the table. But if it's a significant amount, then that's an option we could pursue. A one-time free cash expenditure. Try this out from April of this year to October of this year. And if we decide this wasn't worth it, we never do it again. And if we decide, wow, this is really worth it, then we might wanna make it a recurring operating expense in future fiscal years.
So, so, Mr. Chairman, like I said, I mean, I, I think this sounds like a great program. But I, I really, we have some serious financial situation here. And, you know, it'd be great to have this program, and, and I would be all for it. I mean, seriously. I think it's, it's actually very important to keep the place clean, to make it looking nice, and to give, you know, the residents, you know, a city that they can look at and be proud of. I, I'm not, I'm not downing the program at all. I think it's a worthy thing. But we're gonna have some serious financial difficulties here. And so I just think spending an additional new program of $300,000 is, 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 that is not the right time to try something out. I, you know, we've spent a lot of money and depleted a lot of our free cash, no matter how much we're gonna get this, this next year. I, I just, I just don't think that now is the time to be doing something like this. I mean, it's not, it's, it's really just, we have to be a little bit more careful about our spending when our revenues are, are really dipping. And, and I, I can say, yeah, we're, we're not gonna have a balanced budget, because we're already $6.5 billion in the hole. So, you know, I, I don't mean to be down on, on any of this. It's just, you know, I, I, I think councilors need to think about the fiscal realities of, of what we're able to do and what we're not able to do. And I think that when we go to the taxpayers and ask for money for stuff, you know, I, you know, I, I think we really just have to be careful when we're really in a bad situation already. That's, that's all I've got. Thank you.
Food for thought. I'm not suggesting that this, uh, philosophical way of thinking about this is right for anyone, but I always look at these kind of programs this way. I look at this kind of program the same way I always look at summer youth jobs program. They're best, basically, economic stimulus programs. You give kids money, and they go out and they spend it in the community. That's what typically happens. And I look at this the same way. You're going to hire Chelsea residents for six months, you're going to pay them money, they're going to end up spending this money in the community. It's, uh, you could look at it as just another piece of our effort to stimulate our economy in the midst of this, uh, economic downturn. That's one way to look at it, and that's the way I typically have always looked at these kinds of, uh, temporary employment programs. They do provide, beyond the money to the individual, they do tend to generate some economic activity in the community.
Counselor Vito.
Sorry, I, I just have one, one more question, if, if you, if I may.
Go ahead, Counselor Taylor.
Sorry.
Can, can I be hard, or do I need to restart?
Are we running out of time?
We're, well, well, we're going to run out of time very shortly, but I would just wanted to hurry up and ask you a question, Counselor Taylor.
Just one quick question, is, do we have any revenue coming in for fines, for littering, or anything else that we could put towards this?
Not material.
So, there's no enforcement on, on littering?
No, there's no, there's no enforcement on littering.
So, maybe we ought to start looking at that, too.
Counselor Taylor, I'm sorry, Counselor Zabit, I'm sorry, Counselor Vito.
Can you all hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, um, the audio is absolute trash today. Um, so, I just, you know, I didn't want to come on here and be the, the bad guy, so I'm glad that Tatiela went before me. Um, I have to admit that on some of the darkest days in our community, walking by and seeing those flowers around the city really just boosted, it just boosts morale, it just was very inspirational. And as someone who has a mini garden in her house and, uh, two very green thumbs, I can't tell you how important I know that this is for the community, for community building, to getting people engaged, and for all of us to wrap around such a cool project. On the other hand, it's just, I, it just, for me, it, it just kind of, you have people here whose water rates continue to go up, whose taxes continue to increase by double, and then we put a couple of flowers around the city, and it's like, what are we doing to help folks? I'm thinking, we need to focus on what we're going to be cutting coming this new budget, um, for 2022, not thinking about how we're going to add yet another hefty price tag. And I can't tell you how much it pains me to say that with, with how much I love, um, plants and flowers, and how important and vital I believe this program is. Maybe it's time that we reevaluate some of the other, uh, programs that we're funding and seeing if they're actually beneficial as to justify and be able to pay for this program. But I think that we continue to spend money so frivolously, and we're at a point where our community is in a very tight situation, we're in the middle of a global pandemic, people are about to lose their housing, and we really need to get, get serious about the messages that we're saying, because, that we're sending. Because if we're saying, yeah, your taxes are being raised, and, and, and that's happening out of this side of our mouth, but, oh, yeah, let's invest in some flowers, it just kind of sends the wrong message. So, I, I don't really know how I feel about it, and I feel torn even saying everything that I've said, but I have to be 100% honest with you all about how I'm processing this. We have serious issues that we need to tend to, um, and, and I appreciate that Mr. Ambrosino is willing to invest in a program like this, but Mr. Ambrosino also likes to spend money and doesn't like to reevaluate the other programs where he's spending money to see if they're actually fruitful. And so, as, you know, as a city counselor, it is our job to hold him accountable, and that's where I stand. But I appreciate what everybody said about the program, it was a great presentation. Um, and I, I got to tell you how good it made me feel seeing those, um, when things were at their worst. So, thank you for everything.
Counselor Leo Robinson, allow you with the last questions before we close the meeting.
How many days a week do we have the Roca crew?
Uh, we have the Roca crew, uh, four days a week, so it, 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 they roughly deploy about four or five youth. And I mean, and, and, and I sent pictures to, to a lot of you guys about, you know, the, uh, and women, uh, about what they actually do, right? I mean, so, so just yesterday, uh, uh, Counselor Zabit emailed me about the, uh, trash on, on the Mill Creek. Roca was, was deployed there today, right? I mean, this, it's not an issue of, 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 uh, of, of Roca, uh, not doing their job, it, it's just, we have a lot of work to do, right? I mean, and, and, and to keep up with it, we, we can't do it with the resources that we have today.
Right, because if we're going to spread these 25 people out around the city, my suggestion would be to take the Roca crews and have them concentrate on taking care of the parks, and then being able to go down to the creek and clean up around the creek. I think if we can utilize them in a better manner, that we can get more for the buck while we're looking at other alternatives to the program.
So, unfortunately, we've run out of time, and we need a break for our IT crew between meetings, so, um, I'm sure that this will be, this will have further discussion. I want to thank everyone for tonight for coming in, in particular, the, uh, individuals from the city, uh, who, residents who started this program, Naomi Zabit and Celeste, I appreciate you coming in, and our commissioners. And to my colleagues, thank you for the questions. Um, we will now be closing, and we'll see each other in three, four minutes. Thank you.